We'll be led in the pledge tonight by Mr. Tim Tek.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please join us in a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. That takes us to number six.
Okay, we have representatives from firm Johnson Bailey and they've asked to do a presentation and step up now, sir.
Mr. Jim Bailey, thank you. Mr. Lyle Lynch?
Thank you so much for inviting us. We appreciate it an awful lot. I see you're used to moving quite quickly, so I promise I won't drag this out for you. I'll just take a few minutes of your time. First of all, good evening, Chairman Burns, members of the board, Director Gill, Mr. Clardy. I'm sure you're not interested in spending a lot of time hearing me talk about myself or our company. We have other things to do like figure out how to educate the children of Rutherford County. So Johnson Bailey has been in business here in Rutherford County, city of Murfreesboro, since 1975. We started off in an old Packer dealership over on Academy Street, then moved to an old gas station on Vine Street. And now we're in city center in the seventh floor. We've been there since 1991. We have just celebrated our 35th anniversary and we feel very fortunate considering the economy to still be in business these days. I am one of three owners of the company. I was here since inception, of course. Lyle Lynch is a business partner who joined the firm in the early eighties and Jim Pettit, who is not with us tonight, also joined the firm in the eighties. We're a local taxpaying firm. We have employees who have children who have been through the Rutherford County school system. Both of my sons graduated from Rivadale High School and went to Central Middle School. Both of Lyle's two sons graduated from Segal and Lyle, young whippersnapper, is actually a Rivadale graduate. That happened a long time before that. Members of my firm try and give back to the community. We serve on local boards. I've served on a number of boards. I'm currently serving on the city of Murfreesboro Board of Adjustments and Appeals. I serve on Rutherford County PBA. I serve on the Middle Tennessee State Honors College Board of Visitors. I've served on some bank boards. Lyle's currently serving on some boards that involve nonprofit entities of the community. So enough of that. We, I just want to point out that we, we try and keep our interest in the community, here in the community. Pay taxes in the community, so monies that we earn go back in the community. Thanks to the economy now, we are six people strong. We have three waiting in the wings to come back and join us, thanks to our lovely economy. One of the major strengths of an architectural firm is its ability to develop repeat clients. And we're happy to say we have some long-term repeat clients, Williamson County Board of Education, Summery County Board of Education, National Health Corporation. We have been doing business with them for 36 years and very proud of that fact. We actually started doing work for this board in 1987. We started off by doing the two annexes at Rivadale and Oakland. And the last project we did for you was in 2001, which was the Blackman Elementary School. We did a large number of projects for you between those times. And of course, the face of education has changed considerably since then. We've gone from flat roofs and inefficient heating and air conditioning systems to slope metal roofs, geothermal systems, high-performance insulation, high-performance windows and glazing, using more daylighting to help reduce our energy costs. Siding buildings so they're more kind to the environment. We're doing all the same things for other clients also. Everyone seems to have gotten on that bandwagon. It's a good thing that they have, they've done so. Our Summery County Board of Education has a written policy that all their schools will use slope metal roofs and they all will use geothermal. And they've had a great success with geothermal heating and air conditioning systems. So we are doing all types of schools. We're doing elementary, middle and high schools. We've done a significant number of schools for Williamson County lately. They are a fairly wealthy county and they continue to build schools, although that work is slowing down somewhat also. We've done some very contemporary projects. We've done some very plain projects. We've done some very traditional-looking projects such as the Pittard Elementary School. So we, our designs are a result of what our clients demand, what they want to see. So we're not coming to you saying we're going to do a specific type of building for you. If we had the opportunity to do a building, it would be to your liking. We'd work with your staff. It seems like every school system works differently. Some school systems say, here's what we want, do it. Other school systems say, no, we want you to meet with our teachers, our staff, formulate a design from there. So we do things all different ways. I'm going to have Lyle hand out the brochure. I want to do this as simple as possible and as short as possible. Director Gill and Mr. Clardy already have copies of this, so we just have a copy of the brochure and an introductory letter. And it's a very typical brochure. It's full of pictures and information about the firm. But I would like to draw you to one part of the brochure, just when you have a chance to look at it. And it's in the back of the brochure after the photographs and plans of some current projects. And it's titled Change Order Data, Educational Projects. It looks like this. And this is simply a recap of essentially our performance with our other clients regarding construction of school projects. We're pretty proud of the fact that our school projects have very limited change orders, the result of any of our oversights or errors. Majority of the cost for change orders have been with either owner-directed changes or changes resulting from poor site conditions. So if you get a chance to look this over, I think you'll find that our cost to you because of our negligence is extremely low and most often rare. Our reputation is a fairly strong reputation regarding our approach to our services to our client, the way we oversee construction of a job. We currently work with the contractors who are bidding Rutherford County schoolwork. We have worked with them in the past, some of them 25, 30 years. They can probably tell you we are not set in our ways, but they know pretty much where we stand when we start a job together. And that is the contract documents are what they bid their price on and we expect them to follow. And we'll see to it, to the end, if they follow those documents. We're not perfect. We make mistakes. We're only human. If we make mistakes, we try and see if those mistakes are corrected prior to anything being placed in construction that requires things to be demolished. If that does happen, then we pay for the damages caused by our negligence and our oversight. That doesn't happen very often, a fact that we are very proud of. But that is essentially the way we work and the contractors know that's the way we work. Some of them say we are too hard, but the people that we work with constantly like the way we work because they know exactly where we stand, where they stand, all the time. Briefly, fees. We charge market rate fees. Our fees for prototype work, that is repeat exact buildings, is two and a half percent of the construction cost. And that includes all of the consultants normally involved in a complete building project, which is civil, structural, mechanical, plumbing, electrical and landscape architecture. And we provide any others that are necessary because of, because of site issues that are not necessarily common to other projects. Other projects, we tend to like to negotiate on a project-by-project basis. Other projects would include small additions, large additions, remodelings. And our fees are generally three and a half to six and a half percent, just depending on the project. If you called us and said, hey, we want to completely renovate a school that's 75 years old, it would probably be at least six and a half percent. Because we probably don't have accurate drawings from which we can base our designs on. It'd be a lot of field investigative work, a lot of time on our part and our engineers to provide the kind of end project we want. That's about it. I promised this would be short. We have 35 years of experience in the business. We are a local firm. We're just a couple of miles down the road in the heart of the city. We've been here for 35 years. We live with the projects that we design and oversee in this city. We don't go home at the end of the day and say, well, that's the way it is. I hope we'll be here for another 35 years. I can guarantee you I won't be there for another 35 years. Perhaps Lyle, although he's getting gray hair as well as, as well as I. Lyle has some faction figures and a couple of projects we have completed lately regarding a new high school and a new elementary school regarding cost per square foot for construction, data about the size of the school. If you would be interested in hearing any of that. These are Williamson County schools. They're a little bit fancier school than we do for Summery County, for instance. If you would like to spend just a couple of minutes, I think Lyle would be happy to give you some cost information. Or do you have any questions?
I was going to say, and I know we've met with you before, Mr. Clardy, and I have, and I know you'd have a real interest in getting, getting to work again in Rutherford County. Our history, I guess, with Binkley Garcia started probably with Segal High School. And they, I presume, they got the business because of a great rate and they've since said, pretty much honored that rate throughout with respect to prototypes. I think they charge us 3% and have given us a good rate on additions as well. All that said, Mr. Clardy and I talked today, we're conscientious of the fact that you want to do work with us. And I think what we're going to do, hopefully we'll get the Eagleville design process started tonight. Now, Binkley Garcia has done a considerable amount of labor work on that already. But we're willing to go back out and do an RFP for the next project and give you and others a shot at that business. And I think that's probably as fair as we can, so that might make it a moot point with respect to sharing what you've charged Williamson. I know you do a lot of the work. I know you do quality work too. I mean, I personally would be, know that you do us an excellent job. But it's often tied to the, you know, to the, to the rate that we're charged, as you know, too.
I understand that. I appreciate that very much. That's very kind of you. I'm really here just to try and establish a reconnection with this board. I don't believe any of you are here when we were previously doing projects. And there were some extenuating circumstances to why we were not given other work. Though I'd be glad to sit down with any of you on a one-on-one basis. A lot of it might be personal opinion. I have no exact facts. But thank you. That's very kind of you. I really am just trying to make a reconnection. I'm not saying, give us all your work because we're local. But we would like to reestablish some connection with this board since we are a local firm that's been here for a long time and know the community pretty well. So, any questions?
Questions for Mr. Bailey? Well, if they'll get a chance to bid on the work, like you said, that's as fair as we can be.
That'd be a great opportunity for us. Thank you very much.
Well, thanks for coming. It was. Thank you. Number seven, here you want me to take this one? Last Saturday, the board met in a retreat at the MTSU Foundation, which is something we've been talking about for several months, I guess. And several of us were a little bit, we hear the word retreat and, you know, we think of getting to know you exercises, holding hands, singing. Glad to say none of that happened. And I think the feedback I've gotten has been pretty more positive than the experience that we had on Saturday. So I asked Dr. Patrick McCarthy, who's the man who was our facilitator at that retreat, just to come and not for our sake so much as for the public's sake, to hear just in brief what we came up with and maybe just say a word about the process we went through to get there. So Patrick, if you'll come up, we appreciate you coming tonight. And the members, you have a, before you, a little handout that summarizes the main points here.
Yeah. Well, thank you for the opportunity. I really enjoyed the opportunity to work with you all on Saturday. You know, it's not every group that's willing to take a full Saturday. And for those of the public who weren't aware, we were there, you know, 8:30, 9 o'clock in the morning till past 3:00 in the afternoon. And it was, you guys were active the whole time. It was a very productive session overall. You know, just a little bit about, about myself, I'm with MTSU Center for Organizational and Human Resource Effectiveness. We do a lot of these kinds of work. And this, sometimes strategic planning, I suppose, can go a lot of different ways. We really did try to avoid kind of the frilly hand-holding and feel-good stuff and really kind of take this down into looking at more substantively what might be some of the kinds of issues. As you can tell, you guys have an agenda from meeting to meeting. It's really difficult to deal with more than just what's immediately on your plates. And so what this really was, was an opportunity to sit back a little bit and say, you know, when we, what, banter a little bit about some ideas of things we'd like to spend more time on, maybe dive a little deeper into and, and some goals to press ourselves on in the year ahead, three years, five years even, along the way here. The DNJ did, did a nice job of kind of summarizing some of the key things that, that came of that. I gotta give you a lot of credit. It was very nice candor, I thought, among everybody to really kind of brainstorm a little bit. It's a, it's a little tough to throw ideas out there and worry that somebody's going to make something of them before they've really had a chance to be explored. And, and everybody was very willing just to kind of dive in and toss ideas out there. Had about 20-something kind of key goals or objectives that were brainstormed. And we really kind of narrowed it down to about five major priorities that you all dove into in more detail. As, as the DNJ outlined, some of the ones that really emerged as getting more significant attention were the idea of looking further into some technical education opportunities, preparing students for technical schools, in both in terms of looking at what are we doing currently? What resources do we have? How well are we utilizing them? And also exploring what are some ideas that we can do for down the line here, whether that might involve setting up a specific vocational school, whether that involves looking at what we do within our current school systems. I, I think what, what you came up with was to say, this is where working with, with Mr. Gill and the rest of your staff and perhaps putting together a committee that can develop a closer look at this and come to recommendations is probably the next key steps to there. One of the second areas that came of this was attention to at-risk subgroups. Of course, this has always been a priority of sorts, particularly with the impact it has on student achievement and so forth. And I think that the feeling of the board on this is while this is already getting a lot of attention, more is still warranted because the, the impact is significant along the way there. And in particular, to try and look in the time ahead at what are the specific needs and some of the strategies that can be tied to those particular needs, including what can we do above and beyond what's already going on. And Mr. Gill, they're loading you up. One thing, you know, it's, it's the board's idea, it's the board's job to kind of determine some priorities. Of course, the how-to and getting it done falls right on your desk. And, and this is certainly going to be another one where you're very much a partner in that process and, and your staff. Attracting and retaining effective teachers was the third major area. Again, this is seen as an area where Rutherford County schools is probably in many ways in better shape than most out there. But because the impact in the classroom is so direct and so significant that anything we can do to enhance how well we're attracting and retaining the effective teachers is significant, meaningful. And this is another one, we're looking at identifying a couple of different things. First of all, make sure we understand if, what are the keys that are affecting why people either decide to stay or leave? And better understanding what we can do about those issues. So the key action steps that were identified from there was try and get a better handle on, on, other than sort of the anecdotal ideas, about what are some of the reasons why, why teachers choose to, to leave or not to come here? And identifying some strategies that target those above and beyond the initiatives that are already going and underway. The last two areas that were probably a primary focus were relations with local and state lawmakers. There certainly are partners in everything from funding to resources and, and just having a good line of communication with them is, is always important. And also the relations with our neighbors here over in the Murfreesboro city system. And the good news there is, that's been probably some, some positive developments of, of late in that area. And that was sort of viewed as an area where let's, let's continue the, the positive steps that have been occurring lately. So that was one really kind of more maintaining the trend that's already underway there. Anyway, 17 other ideas that were tossed about as, as possibilities for further attention down the line as well, too. I'll spare listing out all 17, but they're certainly in the materials I provided for you as well, too. Other than that, I'm more than glad to field any, any questions or, or comments that you may have otherwise.
Board members, anything you want to say?
Dr. Burns, we had talked about putting a timeline on this. And I don't know if we're prepared this evening, but we certainly want to keep that as a priority so that we can follow.
We do. And I said I was going to have a suggestion by tonight and, so we can either talk about that a little later during general discussion or why don't we just do that? We'll take that up again a little bit later.
That was a good suggestion coming out of the retreat. We had identified next steps. And probably the most immediate next step was putting a timeline on those next steps.
I just thought it gave us a good opportunity for all of us to kind of share our priorities because we had so many. And, and they all kind of worked out kind of a majority rule type to get to the top. But you did an excellent job of coordinating conversation. And I just thought the communication and, and basically being able to be candid, even though we had the media there, we didn't have the television cameras on us. So I thought that made everyone a little more relaxed, a little more free to share their ideas.
I thought it was remarkable. You've got, you know, several different people with a lot of different backgrounds, a lot of different perspectives. We go into the meeting wide open for brainstorming what, what ideas to dive into. Coming out of that in one day with, with several 20-some issues on the table and then some consensus, a really good consensus actually among it, is you all deserve a lot of credit for having worked through a lot in a short period of time.
Well, we certainly appreciated your efforts on Saturday and thank you, Patrick, for coming and giving us this report tonight. And you said it, but let me just reiterate. I was pleased and a little bit surprised at the high level of consensus there were on the top three was, on the top three issues, that most of us put a pretty high priority on all of those. So I haven't had a chance to talk to Mr. Gill about all this yet, but this will give him something to do over the coming months.
And the next step then is, is detailing out the action plan for the how-to for getting them done. And that's where, the board certainly isn't capable of doing it at that level at the retreat, because that's retreat, because that's where you need the operations folks, the staff, who, who really are capable of knowing those details. And so that is the next stage.
So this is not the end of our process by any means.
I, I think, I do think it's worth reiterating that these were not identified as weaknesses in any regard because they happened to land the top three, four or five. I think they just, we need to remind everybody that these are important. We think that there's some positive things already in place there. So nothing should be construed as, as these are weaknesses that we, we just have to get to. But they're, they're, they're things that we want to continue to make progress on.
I'm glad you said that, Tim, because, yeah, we all certainly felt that way. We know that there are initiatives already in place on, on these things. But there were the issues that we thought we might want to, to ramp up a little bit. Well, thank you very much, Patrick.
Thank you. I enjoyed it.
I don't believe we have any visitors, do we? That's Michael. It's number nine then.
Okay, next, your call. Two or three months ago, we, after a few incidents that occurred on buses in one or two of his schools, we organized a committee to try to come up with a solution on how we might attack some of those incidents. And we started a, basically a sexual assault committee that formed by me and James Evans as the coordinator. And James, give us an update on where we are.
Sure. Mr. Gill asked me to give the board an update tonight on the progress of the sexual assault committee. As we discussed in my last update, there are really several pieces to this that are, that are in motion. First is adding the sexual-related offenses to the zero tolerance policy, which, as the board knows, is on tonight's agenda for second and final reading. We also held a follow-up meeting last week with the SRO leadership to discuss the script of a video they were helping us put together. The video will illustrate the criminal consequences of sexual assault and sexual harassment. We've had some cases of students who, for instance, consider touching another student to be nothing but horseplay. And they don't necessarily realize the consequences of what could happen from that. Or you have a consensual situation that just goes too far and it crosses that line and becomes criminal. So the SROs have an idea that, they think they can illustrate how serious these things can turn and that we want to show those to all middle school and high school students once we have the video completed. Blackman High School's helping us actually shoot the video once the script is done. We also held a follow-up meeting with the bus contractors last week. Vicky Johnson had kind of polled some of her fellow, or many of her fellow contractors to get their ideas on how they thought we could improve bus management. We came out with several good ideas from them, including additional training for the drivers, rewriting the bus code of this one so schools have more options, making sure principals respond to bus ride-ups more quickly, ensuring that parents are notified by phone anytime their, their children have some sort of misbehavior on the bus. A lot of times if you send home a note, you know, the child's smart enough to know that's never going to make it to mom or dad. Or if you mail it home, they try to get to the mailbox before then. So by doing a phone call, we can ensure that the parents get it. And then we're also looking at possibly, that one of their ideas, and we like it, was separating genders by grade level from front to back. We haven't researched that completely, but we're looking into it. Later this month, we'll be meeting with the principals to get their input and to inform them of some of the changes that are coming down the line. And we'll also bring, bring in the issue to the, I'll be bringing the issue to the parent advisory council later this semester for their input. Once all these pieces are in place, you know, we'll be launching a parent information campaign about it so they're aware of all the changes and try to get them on board with us. We're going to use the parent advisory council to give us some ideas and the best way to do that. And that's pretty much where we are at this point, but I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions for James?
Any concerns about the, the ideas that we've gathered so far?
Sounds pretty good to me. I don't know. Anybody have comments or questions?
I just think we need to continue to be proactive to, you know, to think ahead and try to take care of these possibilities before they occur, so.
Sure.
How far have you gotten along in talking about bus monitors and the cost related to that?
We have talked to the SROs about that some. If we use the same type of price structure that we do for basketball and football games, it would be pretty high. But we have talked to them about, talked to the sheriff about possibly doing some sort of pilot program to test out the cost. And they're still checking on the details of that. It's being considered.
Okay. Other questions? Aaron?
Just as a first impression, I think the bus driver's idea of separating gender and class, I think that has some real potential and look forward to it.
The bus driver, Vicky Johnson, for example, she, she runs the Eagleville route, which is a K-12 school. So she has, where you have a mixture of all grade levels, you know, obviously both genders. And the idea was, she says she uses on her bus, she separates them, that leaves the first couple of seats open for students who may need an assigned seat. So other than the first two seats, she separates them by gender whenever possible. It's not always possible, and Mike and I have talked about this, Mr. Snell and I have, because it's kind of like packing a truck is what Mike explained to us, that sometimes you have to have that mixture of large packages and small packages in order to get enough of the kids to make sure everyone has a seat. So when we say that we're looking into it, we're not necessarily saying it's mandatory, but whenever possible, we would like them to do it. And it's, you know, something we haven't given a full recommendation to Mr. Gill on yet, but we're discussing it.
Okay. Thank you, James. Sounds like you're making some good progress there. Number 10?
Okay, next up, we have, as is always the case, we have a lot of projects that are taking place in Rutherford County. Mr. Clardy? Mr. Clark oversees those. Mr. Clark is assistant superintendent of charge engineering construction, and he's going to give you an update on the mini-board projects that are taking place.
Well, we're managing to stay very busy in engineering construction, and just wanted to make sure that I got some projects on here that, so that you know that we're wrapping them up, like Central Middle School or Central Magnet School. We're processing final change orders at this time. Oakland High School and also Riverdale High School ed-pack unit replacements. I had several questions on what an ed-pack is. I'm gonna show you a picture of one. This is an ed-pack, it's one of those, it stands in the corner in the classroom. The ADA port-in-place surfacing and playground. We have completed all of those. Contractors finished. We've done the inspections. The students are using these playgrounds now, and as you recall, this project was funded through the IRA funds. We did twenty-one schools, and I've got some pictures of those. This is Blackman Elementary School. You can see some of the stations that are put in here with the surface. These are learning tools for the children, different stations. It also gives the students that have the challenges a place to work and to also enhance their education. Again, the surface and some of the swings, some of the stations here.
What's the life of that surface, Mr. Clark?
The life is, without any maintenance, is approximately ten years. The Stewart's Borough Elementary School re-roofing project is complete now, and we're working on design for the Central Magnet School grease trap that we'll be doing this summer. We have been required to have those in all of our schools. We're getting in pretty good shape with them, but Central Magnet is lagging behind in that. And we didn't have design on it when we did the recent renovations up there, so we're trying to get that done and put it in this summer. Requires tearing the site up pretty extensive. Oakland High School running track, as you know, we've gotten on a program with a recommendation from Mr. Gill and the board on maintaining all the running tracks at the high schools. So Oakland is the next one in line, and we're preparing to do that as soon as the weather gets a little bit better. We're also currently have materials ordered to re-roof Smyrna Elementary School. These funds are coming out of that nickel that the county commission has given us out of the development, and we've been using it for roofs, HVACs, units, all kinds of projects that are capital improvement. Stewart's Creek High School, we're in the design phase now. We have all the peer group meetings are behind us. We're taking all those ideas and bringing the current set of plans up to speed. We'll have one more meeting on that. We've met with the consultants. We're looking at some alternates such as LED lighting for the parking lots and those kinds of things that are saving energy, plus another type of sensor that goes into the classroom that senses the light level in the room and adjusts the lights appropriately. In other words, if you have a lot of outside light coming in, you don't need as much electric light. So we're looking at several different prospects for saving energy on that project.
You know, once the design is done, and assuming the project's approved tomorrow night, I'd like to see you come back and give us a little more extensive, or maybe the architect come and give us sort of an extensive look at what the building's gonna look like. And we saw it early on, but I know there's been some tweaks to the design. I'd be curious to hear about those.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that. The Oakland Middle School playing fields, Mr. Jurnigan asked this question last night, and al- also the Whitworth Buchanan playing field. This is the Oakland, as you can see, we have sod and the infill mixed in. There's still some grass that needs to be sowed out there, but we're kind of waiting until things dry up a little bit. The rocks need to be picked up also. Whitworth Buchanan. This is fields up front by the parking lot. And that's it. Gentlemen, any questions?
Questions, Mr. Clark? Donald.
Back up to the grease trap. Grease trap at Central Magnet School. We maintain grease traps at all the schools, correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And we have a contractor that comes and pumps those out normally, but central, is it being dumped into the, this?
Into the city sewer, and that's one of the things that they picked up through the plan review this year as we were getting ready to renovation and required us to put them in. I didn't have the funds at the time. I wrote a letter to request that they let us put it in, in this calendar year. We asked for the funds in our capital improvement budget last year for this year, and we have those funds now, so once school's out, we'll be able to get that in.
Do we also have some maintenance men who regularly check these, or how, how are they maintained? Is what I'm...
Well, there's not really a lot of maintenance to them. They, the pumping of those, if we have a problem, of course, we go out and check them out, and we have very few problems with them. Now, we have some, most of them are nice because we've installed some, just like Oakland and Riverdale. We brought those up to speed when we did that. But that mainly comes through the cafeteria. It comes into nutrition, food services, and they dispatch the gentleman out to pump it. They can kind of tell when things are getting a little bit slow down, or it's, you know, they're on an annual schedule to pump those.
They are on a schedule, but that's...
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions? Grant.
Have we had any major maintenance problems because of the extreme temperatures we've had this winter, other than obviously the bills would be a little higher, I guess?
Some of the roofs that we are trying to replace, and we have some of them in capital improvements next year, on the old coal pit roof with the layered built-up roof with the tar and the felt, a lot of, we've had a couple occasions recently with the freezing of the roof where we've had drips come in them, so we've had to go in and repair those. And one thing that's very interesting is the quality of the asphalt that's used for roofs now to do built-up roofs is processed differently, and it's not as good as the older roofs were. So that's one reason we've changed off from those things and are using a membrane roofing.
What, what about the pipes? We had any freezing, any major freezing or breaks?
No, sir, we haven't. We've gotten a lot smarter. We control the, all the facilities outside of the buildings where we were having a problem several years ago. So we cut the water to the filled houses, to the sprinklers, irrigation, all of that stuff in the outbuilding in the winter before the hard freezes come, and then we turn them back on in March. And we're getting requests to turn them on now, but we're not gonna turn them on until the weather warms up.
Still a little early. One other question. What about our utility cost as opposed to an average year? Do you have any figures for what it, what it might have run?
I don't know. That's more of a question for Mr. Sandbig.
Okay. Well, I just wondered if we had anything, because I know it, almost every individual has had a, a bigger heat and electric bills than, than have normally, so to know how it might have affected us.
It'll take us a couple of months to, for the building to catch up.
We'll, we'll get back on that, then.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
Very nice report, as usual. Takes us to number eleven.
Facilities. Termination of emergency medical helipad lease agreement since relocation of Middle Tennessee Medical Center from North Highland Avenue to Medical Center Parkway. City of Murphysboro desires terminate the lease agreement for the heliport behind Central Magnet School at East Lisle Street. All requirements of the lease termination agreed, agreement have been fulfilled by the city. Copy of the agreement is provided by the school, school board's review, for the school board's review. Recommend that you approve the lease agreement termination with the city of Murphysboro and the emergency medical heliport at East Lisle Street behind Central Magnet School.
Second. Discussion. Just as a reminder to the viewers, we discussed all this at a, at our work session yesterday. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion's adopted. Twelve.
Financial matters. A, school board records to county archives, one hundred seventeen boxes and seventeen filing cabinets of old school board documents were moved to the new county archive building from Central Magnet School last school year, so the county archivist, John Lodell, and the MTSU graduate students who assist him could evaluate the records that need to be kept. Mr. Lodell spreadsheet summarizes the documents as provided. We're asking the board approval to destroy the red highlighted items and approval to give the county archive the responsibility for maintaining the other documents. Central office staff have reviewed the listing of the boxes to be destroyed, and the motion is to approve the destruction of the red highlighted items on the list prepared by the county archivist, archivist, and to give the county archives the responsibility of maintaining the other documents.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion's adopted. I've lost my place here.
Excel Energy hangar. Excels Energy Group change order and additional grant funding. The Excels Energy Group lighting sensor project change order is for an additional two hundred and fifty-two remote sensors for a total of seventy-five thousand, six hundred dollars. Fourteen thousand, four hundred in additional grant money from the state is available to pay for part of this change order. The remaining sixty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars can't be paid from the general purpose school capital outlay budget of seventy-five thousand dollars. Recommend that you approve the seventy-five thousand, six hundred dollar change order to Excels Energy Group and to accept fourteen thousand, four hundred and forty dollars in additional EESI grant money from the state as presented.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion's adopted.
Just, just a, an update for folks out there. Excels Energy got a contract with Rutherford County to put sensors in all the schools so that if in, I think, a period of five minutes, there's not any motion, and also they have heat sensors in them, then the lights will cut out, and they won't come back on until there is some kind of motion. So it should be that when you go by a school at night, classroom lights should be off and things that you've probably noticed in the past, or lights have been left on, shouldn't be that way. So it should be within four years of paying for the project, the savings from paying for those projects will, will carry us a long way in the future. So this is going to pay for itself in four years' time, so we're excited about that. Okay. Stewart's Creek Elementary Tutoring Program. Mr. Zago is requesting board approval for the Stewart's Creek Elementary School PTO to fund three thirty-five hour contracts for after-school tutoring in math and reading. Three of his teachers will work these assignments. Their compensation will be similar to an extended contract. The PTO will reimburse the board the six hundred dollars and the benefit cost of a hundred dollars and twenty cents for each of the three teachers. Recommend that you approve the Stewart's Creek Elementary School PTO to fund thirty-five hour contracts for after-school tutoring in math and reading for six hundred dollars and benefits as presented. If you've got any questions, Mr. Lodell emailed Mr. Zago, and he, he can field them.
So moved. Sorry. Been moved. And second, weren't there some questions last night? Did we? Were those answered last night?
They're looking at student performative assessments, and then they're gonna actually
invite students to stay for this remediation. They're looking at about eight students at a time dealing with a concept or skill that student might be missing. He's looking at teachers and seeing who could, could work, you know, in his after sessions, but also looking at teacher may have a particular skill in that, that area that they want to do. Extended contract, just kind of as a general information, this may be the last year simply because it was funded this year we're in now with IRA funds, and that ends this year. So I think he's looking at what he can do to try to address these needs beyond. So he's kind of the first one that's trying it this way.
Okay. Thank you, Don.
Well, I just, I think this is something that extended contract, it was, might have been controversial, but there were lots of good things about it, and this is one of them. Afternoon tutoring was one. I certainly appreciate the PTO being willing to pick this up.
Well, you know, we talked in our planning about at-risk students. That's what this is about, isn't it? Is giving those at-risk students additional help.
Yes.
Yeah, like you said, Donald, we appreciate the PTO stepping up, but it would be nice if we could do it on a more system-wide level. If we had that thousand dollars less we get per student, it'd come in handy right about now.
Sure would be.
Any other questions on this? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion's adopted.
I think that's equivalent of thirty mile, thirty-nine million dollars.
Yeah, it's a big chunk, yeah.
D, design funds for the Eagleville School additions. The commission's budget committee has asked the board to recommend a funding source for the design of both phases of the Eagleville School additions. The savings from the Oakland-Witworth Buchanan Middle Schools should cover the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars needed to proceed with design for both Eagleville additions. Budget committee would like the board to proceed with the design phase for both Eagleville additions so that we can have firm calls for these additions when the bids for Stewart's Creek High are opened and the commission is finalized in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, construction and debt service budgets. Plan discussed at the commission's budget committee on February the tenth, two thousand and eleven involved using any savings when the Stewart's Creek High bid is awarded as potential funding for Eagleville. The three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in design fees for both Eagleville additions will be funded internally within the building program until an end-of-project cleanup amendment is brought forward for the Oakland and Witworth Buchanan Middle School project to the board and the commission. And just another note, already talked to Commissioner Jordan Health Ed, and they're going to, if the board approves this tonight, are going to add it to Health Ed next week for the first step towards appropriating funding for the design. So our recommendation is that you approve the use of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in internal funding from the Oakland and Witworth Buchanan Middle School project to fund the design fees for both Eagleville additions until an Oakland-Witworth Buchanan Middle Schools end-of-project cleanup amendment is brought forward to the board and the commission.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just very optimistic. Very pleased with the support that the budget committee gave for this, this project. Just want to see it move forward.
I think we all share that sentiment. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion's adopted. So we'll keep our fingers crossed, and we'll keep working, and appreciate those of you who came on this, you know, stay involved, that you know how this works from here on out. So I don't think you'll be shy about sharing your opinion with the county commission at the appropriate time.
We had an outstanding turnout for the budget committee.
That's what I know, so. That's what I, uh, know, so.
Yeah, just, just, uh, since they have turnout, just a quick note on what will happen. It will go to budget, pardon me, Health Ed next week. Soon after that, if it passes, if it's passed on, uh, it will go to budget. It's passed on to budget, it goes for the full commission. And I think they'll vote on it sometime in the middle of March. In which case, pardon?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth of March. That's the middle?
Close enough. It's also St. Patrick's.
Seventeenth of March, pardon me. Anyway, they'll vote on it at the commission level hopefully on March the seventeenth. And, uh, at which point we'll almost immediately get moving on the design. And our hope is that the design will take about four months. Right after that, we will go at the bid for forty-five days. And that bid should be coming in. So sometime about six months from now, we hope to have it passed, have a design, and have the bids in. And simultaneously working on the other side, they're working on Stewart's Creek's design, they'll be finishing up, they'll be out for bidding. We should know what Stewart's Creek's gonna cost. And our hope is that there'll be ample money left so that we can proceed with Eagle. So that's kind of where we are. So we'll all keep our fingers crossed and, you know, have high hopes it'll happen. But we should know a lot in about six months.
Appreciate you giving that, that timeline there, Harry. Anything else? All right, I think we're ready for...
Thirteen. Summer School two thousand eleven calendar. The instruction department has recommended the two thousand eleven summer school calendar. Summer School for secondary students will be offered at Blackwood High School and Oakland High School. Middle School students will be served at Oakland Middle and Rock Springs Middle pending a sixty minimum student enrollment per site. Recommend that you approve the two thousand, uh, the Rutherford County two thousand eleven summer school calendar as presented.
So move. Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Revised policies unless there's objection. Let's spare the actual reading of them. You wanna just recommend your motion? We'll have any discussion at that point.
Sure. Recommend that you approve the revision of policies. One, and these are on the website, aren't they, James?
Yeah.
Uh, recommend that you approve the revision of policy one point six oh two, one point one oh eight, five point one oh two, five point one one five, one point eight oh two, five point one oh eight, six point three one three, six point three oh nine, four point seven zero zero, five point three oh four, and six point five oh three on the second final reading as presented.
So move. Second. Harry, any of those you wanna highlight or any board member wanna mention anything about these? This is the third time we've seen them, um...
I wanna say something about the bullying.
Okay, please do.
Ms. McClapp, I know didn't, didn't one of these refer to bullying that the gentleman sent us an email about today?
It did.
Would you kind of address that real quick?
We come up to the microphone.
Uh, the question that was raised in the email was a concern that we were reducing bullying from a level two misbehavior in the code of conduct to a level one misbehavior. And there was a typo on the agenda. What we are doing is adding bullying in any form or by any method, which will include cyberbullying and those kinds of things. But it will be listed as a level two misbehavior directly under the bullying that we have now. So it's not being reduced at all.
Thank you for clarifying that. It was a little puzzling when, I think we all got that email and, uh, so I'm glad to get that cleared up. Any other comments, questions about these proposed amendments? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Fifteen is mainly a reminder to the board members that we are constantly going, undergoing our, uh, on-your-own-time review of these policies that are already in place. I don't think we've been overwhelmed with, uh, comments about them. Uh, I wouldn't really expect that given that we did a major overhaul a couple of years ago. Uh, but if you ever do have questions or comments, let, uh, Mr. Gill or Angel or me know and we'll get that on the agenda. General discussion? Okay.
Uh, and I want Ms. Barnes to address it about the concussion. Yeah, Doc, and what brought it up is you and I both got an email the other day from a gentleman whose daughter played soccer, I believe, at Oakland, or Siegel, who had a concussion earlier this year when she might have been tripped or something. And of course concussions are common, or, or, back when I played ball, we, we never even thought of concussions or talked about them much. But now they're really coming to the forefront with respect to awareness and treatment and being able to identify those things. So really it was a result of this guy kind of notifying us and got us thinking about, hey, we need to do something on concussions. Kind of give the board, if you would, and also the public, a, uh, report on what we've got planned for next Monday week.
This is the idea of the baseline testing.
Yes, yeah.
As Mr. Gill said, we saw the editorial actually in the DNJ. But before that, we started recognizing the importance of understanding traumatic brain injury in players, excuse me, and concussion, what we commonly call concussions. And this has come to everyone's forefront, I guess, over the past two years, especially since the NFL and other bigger organizations have, have brought this to the surface. So what we did was work through our student health services department with Liz Graves. And she has been contacting orthopedic physicians in the local community and working with that group, actually Tennessee Orthopedic Alliance, to come in and present to our high school and middle school principals, athletic directors, and identified sports. And there are seven sports that we've identified or they've identified as a target sport. They'd be in football, basketball, soccer, wrestling, rugby, and cheerleading as those that have the most opportunity for injury, for head injuries. So those coaches, again, athletic directors and principals are all coming in on February twenty-eighth. We have them in for two hours. Dr. Stenagel, I believe I'm saying that correctly, from Tennessee Orthopedic Alliance is hosting the training. We also have Brad Rowling, who is the coordinator for our athletic trainers in Rutherford County, who will be coming with him and co-hosting that presentation with him. Liz Graves, again, our nurse coordinator, is gonna do that same presentation for all of our school-based nurses. So everyone is on board and on the same, you know, agenda. Anything else?
Well, so is there, can, I believe that the gentleman who sent the email was interested in doing some sort of test on every player? And then, yeah. Are you discussing that at all?
There is, and that's something we're still looking into. Um, there's costs associated with that. Although the doctors at the TOA have, have presented something to us and they're still not firm in, in what they're planning to offer to school systems. So we're looking into that as maybe the next step. We'll present that to Mr. Gill and then we can bring that to the board when we're ready and know more about it.
And, and baseball was not on the list?
Baseball is not an identified sport. That's not to say we can't do something in the future certainly. And Mr. Gill always calls the coaches in in the summer before school starts to do an overview of a lot of things, including ethics. And that's some, the thing that we'll also cover at that time, is just a review of all this concussion information.
You know, but it's a good question, Mr. McClapp. You know, the principal will be there, the athletic director and the trainer. So they'll hopefully take that information back to the school and, and, you know, it'll percolate back to the, all the coaches so that they'll be conscious of what, what to look for.
What you're referring to is that baseline testing. And what we found out that it is, is actually sitting at a computer and taking a test on the computer and getting a baseline of how a student responds to certain questions. And then following an injury, that student would take the same kind of test. And the doctor would then judge what different responses came from that student and use that data to help identify problems. So it's a pretty complicated process. We just need to learn more about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we take a couple of minutes and hash out what might be a reasonable timeline on these next steps? Under technical education, uh, we ask that you form a committee to look at this. And I think the idea was do something analogous to what we did with Magnet School. We got that going. We got a committee of all sorts of different interested folks. I think that's something that you could do fairly soon.
I will tell you, this Kay Nixon came to see me the other day and dealt with Mr. Odom. I, she's, they're requesting fourteen to sixteen additional CTE teachers for next year. So obviously CTE is live and well.
Tim?
I, uh, felt like I had a pretty good handle on what we were doing in that area and schools until I went to Oakland on another matter. About, uh, a month or so ago, met with Mr. Clardy on, on some things there. And was amazed at some of the things that are there that I did not know were in place. So I think some of it needs to be education for us as the board, so we will know really what is out there. And, and I, I feel a little embarrassed to, to say that I was not aware of some of the neat stuff going on. So I, I think the community at large, and I think we need to be educated on what is available. And there's a lot more out there than I ever thought that there was. I, I, I know one issue that we have to deal with is making sure we can attract students to take it. We recognize the need, but sometimes parents and students at that age level don't recognize that need. I think that mindset that everybody has to go to college is still in place. And, and so, you know, once, if we can do a better job of educating not only what is available, but, but the, the positives that can come from that and, and, and try to make it an okay thing to sign up to take those kinds of classes so the kids can kind of get into an area and track that they really are interested in.
Actually Kay is, I told her today, I'd like her to do a spotlight here in the next month or so on CTE programs. Like I say, it changes. It's changed so much. And with the new requirements at the state level, it's, uh, it's gonna continue to change. So, yeah, that's a good point.
So that'll be something, can be achieved.
Yeah.
I wanna say a month, but long enough to get a committee together.
Sure. Got that, Ms. Michael.
Attention at risk subgroups. Um, I think a lot of this is sort of filling this, reminding us, I guess, if the proper word, of what we're already doing. And then some ideas about what we might do, uh, in the future. So that, um, that would be the first thing that we would wanna see.
What we're doing versus what we'd like to be doing?
Well, yeah, both. Partly just letting us know what's going on, but also what ideas might you have to, to ramp it up? And if there's some way to, you know, support.
And some future challenges that, that may be presented, uh, you know, with the advent of Stewart's Creek and, and those type of changes in our, in our structure.
And finding the funding resources to do it. I mean, I, I think we're all...
We'll give them an extra week for that.
At a point to recognize that, you know, I, I, I think it's really nice that the, the PTO is doing that at one of our schools. But I think we all recognize that that really is not the goal that we should have.
You know, I mean, we, we'll be somewhat limited, obviously, with, with funding. But, I mean, we can try.
So a couple of months?
Sure.
Is that reasonable? Board members chime in if you think we're being unreasonable. Two months? And then, and the third one is essentially the same sort of idea. We know that you've got plenty of stuff going on already, but sort of remind us what those, those things are. And again, if we just have a little discussion at the board level about what, how we might carry that down the road.
So do you want us to bring this back to a board meeting and discuss it? Is that it kinda, maybe in a month, bring that tech ed and then the next month? Okay.
Well, I think on tech ed, we, we would like to see that committee put together. But that would, that might happen after we have the board discussion. Board members chime in if, uh, mangling this.
I think the, the amount of emphasis that we put on the CTE, uh, initiative, um, I think it's reasonable that in a month, we, we have a committee put together and kind of a structure, you know, from the, from the director of, of how we would proceed. But really what comes of that may take several months beyond.
Well, I imagine it would. I mean, you don't expect to have a plan in a month. And it might be that the committee decides there's not much more we can do than what we're doing.
Could do.
We just wanna explore the, the area.
Well, the spotlight may, like Mr. Tackett said, give us some, pardon, uh, give us some knowledge, uh, that we don't presently have, uh, not knowing how, how, how many different opportunities there are in, in career and technical. So maybe that presentation to enlighten us and then form the committee. I don't, just something to throw out.
We'll, we'll, we'll get on, uh, I'll get on the committee and also at the same time, I'll make sure Kay's on there. For some reason, I may put a board member on too, if no one objects. I'm sure somebody will want to serve him, yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's been a few months since we've had any, uh, contact, uh, from the board level, uh, from our state representatives. I just wondered if, uh, we might invite them to give us a little preview of what they think might be happening and, and so we can kind of get prepared, uh, if we see some, some real problems there with the state budget and so on and so forth. So it's been a while since we've actually had a presentation by any, any of the members. They haven't been invited. Maybe the reason they haven't come.
We have had that in the past, I know.
Been a while.
What do you think about that? Say, Terry?
So we'll see him next week.
That's true. Someone's going to Nashville on Tuesday. Um, but it's never a bad idea to have him here. And, uh, let's talk about that a little bit and figure, see if we can't figure out a date.
Kind of identify what, I mean, if we wanna talk about budget or career technical or, yeah, we'll give them the things we'd like them to talk about.
Might be a good opportunity to highlight some of our programs and invite them to, uh, to, to join us for lunch or, or dinner at, at one of our high schools and let, uh, let one of those culinary arts, uh, show their stuff and kind of highlight what's happening.
In our planning session, we really were complimentary of the effort that we made reaching out to the county commission and the bus tour, uh, and how effective that was. Uh, we were kind of looking for a similar gesture, uh, to the legislative delegation, you know, that, that we could in some way connect with them and, uh, they could share with us and, and we also with them.
I like that idea.
Yeah, Terry, yeah, just taking, that's comparable to what he's talking about.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Okay. Other items? Yes, sir.
Just like to commend Mr. Holliday for suggesting the, this retreat because I don't think very many of us were real excited about doing this again. So, uh, it really worked out well. And I thought the, uh, conversation was, was, was good and the, uh, I think we all kind of, uh, had an opportunity to see our philosophy on, on different areas. So overall, I just, I prefer to do something else on a Saturday. But, uh, but I thought it was, I thought it was valuable and, uh, and helpful.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure you planned it well, though. We picked the first good Saturday we had, also. We're wrong to do that. So let's pick a lousy Saturday. I have, uh, something I'd like to share, if I may. Uh, I had the wonderful opportunity to be an invited guest to the, uh, uh, Blackman Middle School Beta, Junior Beta Club, uh, initi- initiation day where fifty-seven young people were initiated into that group. And had the opportunity to observe sixty-five faculty, a thousand students sit in a gymnasium for a forty-five minute program, which I'm not sure all of them enjoyed every minute of, uh, but did extremely well. And I think we need to just recognize that there are so many good things going on in our schools. And this was an example of, of some of those civic things that sometimes we wor- worry about. Are we trying to teach values to students? And I think it was taken, it took place there. So I wanna recognize Mr. Shelton and his staff for, and their students and, uh, for the wonderful job that they did. I was just extremely impressed. And I think, uh, those that, that doubt some things that go on in our schools need to take the opportunity sometimes to get, go in there and recognize just exactly what's going on with that. On a second thing, I've asked Ms. Michaels if she would to flash up the, the picture of the, uh, two Siegel High School cheerleader squads that have been on our website and just recognize them for their state championships that, uh, have been noted and congratulate Debbie James and their staff out there for, uh, what they've taken place. And there they are and, uh, I, since, uh, they have, have that recognition there, I just wanted to highlight to those other folks that may not visit our website.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Stand adjourned.